If we can all find a seat, we'll get started here now that the technology has caught up with us. Aloha. Yeah, I think you could do a little bit better than that. Let's try that again. Aloha. Much better. Mahalo. Welcome to the Waimea Community Association's monthly town meeting. I'm Lani Olson Chang, Secretary on the WCA Board. As is our tradition, we welcome local clergy to offer a pule at our monthly meetings. This evening, we will welcome Pastor Sanishima Oka to offer our pule.
Somebody was asking me how come a lot of Hawaiian Homestead Association people are sitting in the back row? And it's because they know that the guy's brain is spinning when he's playing. So I'm sorry. It's called a ko. Can we understand? Eko ma ko ma koi lo ko kamei. Mahalo. Yo, we're for this gathering here. We pray that you would share your manaho with us and that we can collaborate on making Waimea community a much stronger, more vibrant, and very safe community. Again, thank you for the opportunity for this gathering. We ask again for your wisdom in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mahalo, Sanish. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to introduce our other board members for Waimea Community Association. We have our President Nancy Car Smith. We'd like to excuse our Vice President Mary Beth Leachek, who's not able to be with us tonight. Victor Tom. I saw Victor. He's our President, our Treasurer. Our Directors include Patty Cook, who's there at the door, David Greenwell on the side, Riley Smith at the door, Christopher Wong, who's at the door, and Ryan Ushijima. I saw Ryan somewhere. Oh, he's right there. Thank you. We'd like to extend our mahalo to everyone attending in person and those watching on live stream on WCA Facebook page and YouTube channel, which can be found on our website, waimetown.org. Recording will be made available for later viewing. Mahalo to James Houston and Nancy Car Smith, who's handling the IT program for us this evening with regard to those tuning in virtually. We'd like to mahalo Director of KEK, Rick Matsuda, and the KEK staff for making their conference room available for us this evening. We know that everyone's time is valuable, and we thank Terry Greenwell, our volunteer timer this evening, who will help us stay on time. Terry has her sign that tells us how much time we have left. Patty Cook, I think you're monitoring Facebook comments, are you? New membership signups can be done with Riley Smith at the door, or you can nail your dues into our P.O. box, which is on our Agenda CD. Or you can sign up online at waimetown.org. Mahalo to everyone who recently renewed their memberships. The restrooms here are located through that door. Take a right down the hallway. And being this is a place of business, we ask that we be respectful while in the hallways, avoiding entering any of the offices. Mahalo for that. Okay, well, now I'm gonna have our community policing report by our community police officer, Justin Cavanti.
Okay, thank you, everybody. My captain really wanted to be here, but he got tied up in Makalua Village. It's kind of busy right now. But I'm just gonna real quick, in a nutshell, I'll take my five minutes before I kick off the podium. But just good announcements, next week, Friday, we're gonna do Coffee with a Cup at McDonald's this time. So we're trying to move around the town, so please come by. His main thing was safety. March, spring break coming up, our Kiki's gonna be out of school. And we're around town, around the beaches, so please keep an eye out on them. And St. Patty's Day is also another big drinking day for some people, so please, if you have something designated driver, take the keys away. I don't have a friend drive drunk. On top of that, our officers did give about 800 citations for the month of February. We had one extra day, so we had 29 days, but they did give a total of 800 citations. A lot of them were for speeding, and there were 26 drivers caught with a cellphone, so that's almost one a day. We did get three DUI arrests, and one of the major traffic accidents in our district, we had eight of them, one of them was DUI-related. So please encourage people to drive safely. And our officers did respond to 28 reckless drivers. That's almost one a day in February. So there'd be somebody calling in a reckless driver. So if you see him, please call it in. Same goes for parking. Somebody parking a handicapped car on the road, blocking the road, whatever it may be, please call. I encourage you to call. Let our officers go out there, deal with it, issue a citation if we have to. As far as our crime report goes, it was pretty good. There were zero burglaries, zero robberies, and zero broken vehicles broken into. But we did have one stolen vehicle and 11 criminal property damages, which is somebody vandalizing somebody else's property. Me and the captain did go to Makalua Village this past February and paint some graffiti. You know, somebody tagged the bathroom down there really good. And still give the graffiti artist airtime. We tried to get out there with the county painters and take it down right away. It's one of those things where you feed it up, we want to give them exposure, so we try to cover it up right away. We did have one drug investigation, which is good for South Kohala, and was unfortunately marijuana-related. But that's all I have for you. I saw the three-minute warning go up. Captain really wanted to be here. He might still be on his way, so just keep it out for him. And that's all I got for you guys. Please be safe, and I'll see you guys later. Yes?
Reckless driving, and you don't have... Somebody passed me on a really blind curve going real fast. But I didn't see a license or anything, so it doesn't give any good to call it in if you don't really know a license or anything.
Yeah, good question. So the question was, if a reckless driver comes by, you don't get the license plate? It was the best description of the car. Pickup truck, red. If there's like a token of a sticker on the back. Or, you know, the best case and the direction of travel and what he was doing. Ko'ala bow, Waimea bow, Kauai high bow. And our officers will go out there and try to search for that vehicle. Yeah? Right?
About the guy in Makalua Village that was breaking into houses or something?
Yeah, so that's what you wanted to come up and address that. So actually, that's what he's tied up doing right now. It is an ongoing investigation, but I can tell you, he is down there with a few other patrolmen and pretty much canvassing the area. I'm probably gonna head down there right after this too, so. But yeah. But yeah, if you see, so if you see a video release come out and you guys have information, go ahead and call the non-emergency line. If you see him walking around, or if he's actively crawling through somebody's window, that's a 911. That's a 911 call, yeah. Okay? We got the one-minute warning. Yes? Non-emergency is 808-935-3311, 3311. Thanks.
Mahalo, Justin. We appreciate our community policing officers. Okay, let's see. Joining us tonight is the new President for Queen's North Hawaii Community Hospital, Stephanie Violetti. Stephanie will serve as a member of Queen's Senior Leadership Team and manage day-to-day operations at the hospital. Before joining Queen's, she was the Community Engagement Navigator at Hawaii Energy. She also held the positions of Senior Vice President at HMSA and Chief Executive Officer at Kohuku Medical Center. Focusing on improving the health and well-being of native Hawaiians and the people of Hawaii is her priority. Welcome, Stephanie.
Hello, everyone. Very grateful to be here and meet all of you today. So just wanted to provide, yeah, just an introduction of who I am and an update about the hospital, so. So what's new? And so I've been boots on the ground here since December 4th. So I've only been here a little over 90 days. So a lot of listening and learning. Yeah, just seeking to understand what's, you know, the wonderful, rich history of this community and the hospital and where I can add value. So we just celebrated our 10th anniversary as a member of the Queen's Health System. And so we had some folks fly over our senior leadership from Oahu and most of our employees just together to commemorate the day. So some of our new and expanded services, if you haven't heard, you can always check out our website. You can always give us a call as well. But we do have two pediatricians expanding our behavioral health. We have ENT services as well. We do have a new MRI, so if you haven't had to use it yet, which we really want to... It's there if you need it. Instal it and open at the end of last year. And so, yeah, so just new technology, trying to get better, more efficient, and faster services to all of you. I just came back two weeks ago. I was able to go to Orlando and pick up from the American Hospital Association, our Rural Healthcare Leadership Award. And for all the work that all of our caregivers have been doing over the past several years, especially in regards to our native Hawaiian health programs. And so I'm excited to continue to do this work. There were over 1,000 attendees there representing hospitals, critical access hospitals, rural hospitals across the country. And so it was nice to be able to showcase all the efforts of what we've been doing on the big item. So just an update. You guys might be wondering what's been going on in the front of the hospital. So this has been something, from my understanding, that's been in the works for several years now. Just to create more visibility as to where the hospital is located. It's part of a larger initiative to kind of that branding as we're part of the overall Queen's healthcare system. So hopefully, it'll be done by the end of the year. All right, and something new that we're rolling out in trying to get more organized and really looking at workforce development, as you all know, that is a big issue, not only in healthcare, but in a number of industries. But we are offering our volunteer program, and so you can reach out to us to learn more. My daughter, who's actually a freshman in college, will be doing this this year as well. So I encourage you, if anybody that's interested in exploring healthcare, this is now available. And then just lastly, just a little bit about me. So this is one of my favorite ole o noiau. I believe it's a privilege for me to be invited, to even be part of this team, be part of the kanu. And I always thought that being in healthcare is a calling. And so I take my kulianna very seriously. I had wonderful examples growing up on what service is. And so I was at Kohuku Medical Center for almost 17 years. My mom was a physical therapist there. I was born and raised in Ko'ala'oa. And I loved it, loved every minute of it. Started off as a social worker, and my last six years there was as a CEO. And had the opportunity to go into different places in regards to healthcare and then switch industries and work at Hawaii Energy, looking at energy as a social determinant of health. As you know, we all pay the highest cost of electricity throughout the country, and that has a big impact upon living in Hawaii in regards to affordability. And I know I'm almost out of time, so that's just my family, my husband Doug, and our two daughters, Kia Melia and our dog, Tank. So excited to meet all of you and figure out how we can partner and collaborate more to really focus on elevating health and wellness on this island.
Mahalo, Stephanie. This is a matter of information. It's the WCA's policy that during an election year, we forego hearing from any elected official at our meetings, starting in February, until our primary candidate forum, which will be held on July 11, and our general election candidate forum, which will be on October 30. We will now proceed with some community announcements. And hope I can coincide with the slides. AARP is offering free tax aid on Fridays at the Waimea Community Center, now through April 12. Tomorrow at Kahilo Theater, Civil Beats Hawaii Storytellers at 6:00 PM. Where I Live, Kona and Kohala is the featured story. Also tomorrow, 3:00 to 6:00 PM, Arca School presents a love fest with live music and is a benefit for the Sarah Foundation. Word is that the local fire trucks that we are lucky enough to have because of generous donation from the community and through the Sarah Foundation will be present as well. North Kohala Resilience Hub is having an Ohana Fun Day on Saturday at Kamehameha Park, beginning at 10:00 AM. Have you met Darby? Darby is a miniature horse with a big heart that visits patients at Queen's North Hawaii Community Hospital. Darby is the first nomination from Hawaii for Pet of the Year. You may vote for Darby by making a donation to Pet Partners. $1 per vote. Voting closes on March 18. Discussions continue about Pu'oko and South Kohala Regional Wastewater Master Plan. The next meeting is on March 14 and will be virtual. Tutu's House is partnering with Naleo TV and West Hawaii Happenings to bring a new opportunity to groups, teams, and volunteer organizations who need help with boosting awareness and enhancing outreach. Learn more at their meeting on March 21. March 23 at HPA's Gates Performing Arts Center, Waimea's own Beamer Solomon Halau of Kohala celebrates with a show filled with pula and mele. March 24 at Kahilo Theater, Kamauela Philharmonic Orchestra features a symphony for your enjoyment. March 29, hosted here at KEK and organized by Naupaka Events, will be Waimea's Family Food Truck Friday. And last but not least, Hawaii County Police Department is recruiting individuals seeking a career built on courage, integrity, and the aloha spirit. Please share this information with all who may be interested. As is our practice, we spotlight a local nonprofit organization every month, and we pass the basket, collecting donations for the organization. Please take part and donate as the basket is passed this evening as we feature Kipuka Okeola, or Coco, a native Hawaiian rural health clinic with Dr. Clarin Ke'loha Bode, Chief Executive Officer and clinical psychologist. We welcome Dr. Clarin Ke'loha Bode.
Aloha, my Coco. Nice to see all my fellow homesteaders here today. Mahalo for the invite as well. So let's see. In 2013, I believe, we, Mike Hudson, started a community needs assessment where the community decided that they wanted to have a rural health clinic that addressed the specific needs of our Kanaka. And so we were born. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. So the mission and vision of Coco is to provide cultural, spiritual, and medical, as well as mental health services to all residents of North Hawaii. But we do have a special emphasis on the Kanakamalu. So because I actually live on Hawaiian Homestead and I'm a member of our board, of our Hawaiian Homestead Board, we decided on the kulianna, to take on the kulianna that the community needs assessment kind of highlighted. Part of our board was to understand that the governance of our board needed to be beneficiaries of the Department of Foreign Home Affairs. So on Coco's board, we have 100% beneficiary representation. If anybody has questions about that, you can ask. So I think I've already told you some of the history. In 2013, we actually launched our independent clinic and in 2017 became a federally qualified rural health clinic. In 2024, we have approximately 3,000 patients that come to Coco. So I think we, I think in 2017, after we had our compliance and our audit of our services, we were identified as an exemplary provider. I always mess up that one. Is that it? Should I open the last one? Okay. I think we take a special pride in trying our best to make sure that our employees are a representation of the community that we live in. So we try really hard to match our employees. So I believe currently, the demographic in North Hawaii is we have 30% male clients living here with about 7% of other ethnicities. And so we try our best to match our employees, as well as our providers, to match that demographic. So I just wanted to interrupt some cases of all of the employees here in Coco. So I think one of our, the programs that we take pride in at Kipuka Okeola is our Ululohkahi Program. Currently, it's funded by an ANA grant, which is a Native American grant. And we, our entire clinic actually focuses on the fundamentals of the Ululohkahi Program, which is to identify and address those health disparities that are most commonly associated with male clients. And so that would be diabetes, cardiovascular disease, obesity, anxiety, depression. So we try our best to be preventive in identifying when those markers are reaching points in which they need to be addressed. And we provide free gym membership, free recipes, food bags, and we put people on a program to try and create longer lives. I did have, did I not have this slide with the results on?
It's all on services.
Okay. I think I may have taken it off because I thought my time was like five minutes. There we go. So we started the Ululohkahi Program in 2018, and we had about 20%, 20% of our program members had benefited as far as lowering all of their health disparity or the markers that we were trying to identify. So in 2023, we had an 80% success rate. So we're getting much better at the goal of what we're trying to do. All right. Mahalo Nui for your time. I appreciate you all. Aloha.
Mahalo, Clarin, and Nancy, and Chris, I think is passing the baskets. Okay. While they're doing that, for the main portion of our meeting this evening, we have the privilege of welcoming Mike Hudson, President of the Waimea Hawaiian Homesteaders Association Waimea Nui Project. Mike wears many hats, as you all know. A retired police officer and founder of Wow Farms are only a couple of hats that he wears. Joining Mike this evening are Waimea Nui Board members Trisha Hudson, Secretary, Sanishima Oka, Ag Director, and Dr. Clarin Ke'loha Bode, Native Hawaiian Health Director. We ask that you hold your questions until their presentation is done, at which time you will have an opportunity to ask questions of Mike and his board. Welcome, Mike. You have those portable mics that you want to turn on when you're ready.
Hello, everybody. I've been the president of Waimea Hawaiian Homestead Association now since, I believe, 2012, 2011. It's been a while. I got involved with Hawaiian Homelands because I live on Hawaiian Homelands. I farm on the Hawaiian homelands. And I'm a born and raised in the civic clubs. And I didn't really fully understand Hawaiian homes. I think most people, including our homesteaders, don't understand Hawaiian homes. They don't understand the law behind Hawaiian homes, the whole intentions and what it's all about. Being well-versed in law, 27 years in law enforcement. I'm pretty very analytical. And so I kind of ripped up the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, and that wasn't enough. I went into 66 congressional hearings, went into all the King's laws, and anything having to do with Hawaiian homes, the life of Kuhiu, what happened, and how we introduced it. Then of course, I got into the whole overture of the Queen and all that, and I went into this whole process. Me and my wife and some board members that run up to Washington ABC to consult with the Department of Justice, the Department of Interior for five times. Five times we went up there, a week at a time, just to kind of understand, make sure that we're understanding what we're reading, understanding what the history is, and getting their viewpoint of who we are. So it's been a long journey. And you know, when, how much have you heard what we're doing on the homestead? It's a community, also a community effort, providing assistance to our community to be resilient, I mean, the whole community, not just the Hawaiian community, the whole community. To be led by the Hawaiians. That's the difference, you know? And that's the basic understanding of what we're doing. A lot of people have a lot of questions of who we are and that kind of thing, but we'll start off with a little bit of what we do. So I'll introduce, that's the Sunny. He heads up our ag division. The whole, it's one of the projects that we started with a The whole, it's one of the projects that we started with a community ag park and it's his kuliana. And you can hear that word a lot tonight, kuliana. Kuliana is basically taking on your responsibility. Now, who cares about our people? There was no jack of all trades. You know, you took on one responsibility and that's what you did. And you trained the next generation and all those who want to be part of that kuliana, they would join him. And so. Sunny had a lot to be in on farmer, but oh wow.
Yeah, my, my history, I mean, getting into. I recall that I'm starting out of my wheelhouse. I was the minister and I watched him for twenty-seven years in the department, watching. So when I moved on to the, um, we came on Hawaiian homes there. Mike and Tricia left my house and Mike didn't ask me, he told me that I was going to farm me too. And so it evolved where, uh, we looked at, um. Looking at some of the needs in the community. COVID really made an impact, it was a strong statement. On the need for food security and food sustainability. And so, um, one of the initiatives on Hawaiian Nui is the ag park. And so I wanted to quickly show you just a couple of slides on what the project is all about. We are, uh, looking at a community supportive, supportive agricultural model, template. And that's what we want to do. A, a great, great example of moving in that direction was a Umekei Ai program. You guys remember the Umekei Ai that we had at Hui'ou Valley during COVID? Um, I think Mike, Mike cited the idea of creating Hawaiian home banks. You know, and the language of Ululau Kahii is healthy eating, long life, a quality of life. You know, and I was a recipient or beneficiary of, of the project. And, um, and so it kind of like led to the idea of the community CSA model. And so, uh, I wanted to step in. And basically, one of the things I learned was that, uh, it was a concept that started in Japan in nineteen sixty. By a group of healthy farmers. And it was, uh, the model was created in Europe ten years later. And right now, I think we've got maybe little over five hundred CSAs around the country. My cup Carolina is, has a lot among, and, um. We looked at one of, one of the best models that's got in Hawaii, uh, Maual Farms. And this is the picture of their, um, and, uh. The history of how it has become so successful. We want to use the model, but we want to use the Waimea Nui rendition of CSA, which is the same slide, the next slide. This, uh, we've been supported, uh, agriculture will, will be, um, by the Maual Farm, but we want to put, uh, uh, greenhouses. And several sizes. With about thirty acres that's been designated for the ag park on one end of the week. Um, and, um. Some other things that we're looking at, bringing up along with the greenhouses is, um. A post artist facility, a commercial kitchen. Um, and we also wanted to, um, I can teach people how to grow tomatoes. I, I grow the sweetest grape when I was committed. But that's the truth. He used to have sweetest tomato. And, and my wife started growing lettuce and growing these herbs and she stole a greenhouse from me and sold it to the store. Uh, he's going to own, so there's a retired teacher. Uh, but the goal is to grow farmers. And again, we want to use the CSA model. Uh, we are currently, um, okay, there we go. Uh, thirty acres of Waimea Nui that's been re-designated to the CSA project. Um, and this is one of, this is one of the things that excites me is that this is going to be native Hawaiian driven. Okay, because it's on Hawaiian homes. And this is an opportunity for us to collaborate with the community. Uh, we're hoping, you know, the Hawaiian farmers, that's, uh, and it's, it's also become a, a, a good opportunity for subside income. But one of the things I'm excited about is we get to, uh, collaborate with the community. Where they're, they can come on Waimea Nui and, and lease two greenhouses. And again, understand that this is now like evolving. We're trying to see how, how things work and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna start. And then see how it evolves, but the plan is to have two. Greenhouses, twenty-one thousand square, uh, twenty-one thousand square feet. On five thousand square feet of Waimea Nui. Uh, the plan originally I think Mike, he didn't correct was, was two hundred greenhouses, it's probably two forty could be in them. And we evolved to different sizes. I mean, some still give only one, one, one half size. And, and you know, they grow smaller crops and stuff like that, but it was a great opportunity for us to collaborate. Uh, and create food standard and food security for our community. Uh, when we're in fruits and vegetables and things of that nature. Okay, next. Uh, without land security, we would, we'd go at least, uh, directly from the HHL. That's going to be facilitated by our Waimea Homestead Association. Uh, and funding and, and process. And so then we just start with a conceptual plan. Yeah, so we're already got the land, uh, the next, the next step is looking at, uh, creating a conceptual plan. And, um, just looking at how we're going to place everything on, on the thirty acres of land. And, and the west axis. I just know that I got my email address, my phone number, going all out for my inbox as I'm sleeping. And that's it.
I'll try and talk a little bit more about the health center. You know, we have a nine-member executive board and when, um. I, 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 um, was elected as the president. Of the, um, of the Kanani, of the Kanani's here, you know, she held up our association in seventeen, eighteen years. But I jumped on board with her, gee. And one of the things I did was. I made sure that everybody on the board took on a responsibility of kuliana. You know, just sit on the board and troll and kick on one kuliana. And that's, that's what you do and you focus on that, so. My wife took on, um, social services, kupuna services. So she was the instrumental person that created, uh. Umekei Ai, that fed three hundred and eighty families for about three years. And so that was her brainchild. I, I found, helped her find the funds to make it happen. But the health center was. We, we had to go through a process and on Hawaiian homelands. I'll make a correction, but sorry, sorry Sunny, but I don't correct, so. The lands we use on the ag park is under the Homestead Association. And through our trade, membership of the ag park, we intend to provide a, um. Benefit as a member to use. Our, the farmlands that we can do. And so it, it will be open to the whole idea of community, not just the homestead. But it's not a some needs, it's a membership, so it's a, it's a benefit. Because it's Hawaiian homeland, we have to be a beneficiary to these Hawaiian homelands. So we, we ironed out some things on. How we can provide a service without some reason. It's to a membership-driven organization. But at least we've kept it through the hands of our homestead association, which is the representative of the beneficiaries of this region. We kind of talked a bit more about the health center that, um. Was her brainchild and. Boy, that was a journey, you know? And before she get out, I would say that. When I first took over. Up in two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve, I realized that. In order to move our people forward, our Hawaiian people, big, number one, they gotta be healthy. Right? Because that's the biggest concern. So health was the number one issue. And then of course with health, it was eating the right food. You know, and there's, there's some, there's a statement that French Journal of Health made in nineteen nineteen. You know, we're doing a, um. Presentation in Congress to get the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act passed. He stood up and made this statement in Congress that. Our, our, our people are dying, we're on a verge of extinction. And at that time, forty thousand Hawaiians was left. He said rice was killing these people. And he wanted us to go back on the land, to start growing wallop, chipotillo and a calo. Poit so that we can regain our health and wellness. When I took a poll at our homestead and asked how much of, how much of our island is still eating rice, pretty much every hand went up. Now, that was like almost hundred years later. So we never provide rice in our Umekei Ai, we provided poi and wallop, you know? And so same with the Ululau Kahii Program, making sure that our, our people eat right, you know, for the decrease the health disparities. We cannot move forward if we're not helping. That's on our mind then, there's nobody, no way we're gonna move forward. So that was our primary goal. As we started moving, to move ourselves forward is to be healthy people. And, uh, Karen took on a big task, now she wasn't alone, Dr. Franco was out here too. Yeah, these two guys created this, this mindset of what, what they wanted to do. And that assistance from the homestead. Most of it worked on by our homestead, you know, to make this a reality. And definitely, everything we do is driven by our homestead and following in the concept of kuliana.
Aloha again, I'm going to show you our, our new building. So last year, we secured a lease with three hundred thousand for a seven acres of land. Right behind Kalu'opana, I'm not sure if everyone is aware of Kalu'opana. So right behind Kalu', um. We have to go through all of them learning processes by getting our environmental assessment. Where currently in the days of. The architecture is finished and tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, I'm with county plan. So we're shooting down. So the building is to help expand our current services where at capacity where we're at. We are hoping to, by incorporating the commercial kitchen that I think Sunny talked about. Uh, our idea is to have people be able to take food from the farm. Bring to the commercial kitchen, prepare, mass food prep, maybe hopefully five to seven days on a time. And if people have meals prepared in their refrigerator, that's likely to maybe stop at Hikau's or Diana's, maybe, perhaps. Uh, but that's kind of the thought. So in addition, when we're, when we're moving to about thirteen thousand square feet, we're currently in six thousand square feet. So we also have a pretty big behavioral house, we have two psychiatrists, two psychologists, much needed in the community. Um, this building that you're looking at is, I'm not sure, let's see, how many know where Uncle Benny's property is? Uncle Benny in Zee. Right next door to Uncle Benny's, where this building is going to be located. So the initial building is twelve thousand square feet, um, and we have. Two other buildings destined to come up shortly, and then hopefully it'll be dentistry, dentistry and farms. So. It's about a sixteen million dollar project where we have secured funding for about eight million, so we're halfway there. Anything else? We still gotta raise about any, so if anybody got bright ideas, remember to hang them.
I mean, that's the basket around here. All right, uh. Next, I'm gonna talk about this, uh. How much you guys heard about this ELC? I think it's very, 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 so. We were invited by General Flynn and Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Cronin. At Waupua Loa to apply for a. Community Development Grant to the Pentagon. And we got the grant through the Department of Hawaiian Homes. So we, we did the grant, wrote the grant deal. In partnership with the Department of Hawaiian Homes, we submitted the grant to. To the Pentagon and Department of Defense and we were awarded, so we're in a process of admission at funding. In, in the process of our development. This, this, this land we're talking about is, yeah, all the way Kalu'opana is, I'm looking so, Kalu'opana is, is that. That is a hundred ninety-one inter parcel. That was designated as community lands, but there's three types of designated lands on Hawaiian land. You have lands that to be awarded to lessees for residential, pastoral or farming. There's commercial lands and then there's community lands. So every, every region of Hawaiian homeland, it's twenty-one region, has these types of lands. That's our community lands, that hundred ninety-one, that's why Kalu'opana is there. And so the development on that land is to benefit the community. And so in nineteen fifty-two, when the first awardees of Hawaiian homelands. When the population was only like three hundred. Her, my, my wife's grandfather was one of the first lessees. And my, my, my dad, a lot of people know my dad, my, my father, Woody, he passed away last year. But he was a young boy when he was taken to that community lands and told how there was. That the department was gonna build out this land with community facilities and parks and this corporate community is nineteen fifty-two. And so the community decided to build a conceptual plan back in the early sixties. Not Nani Vehano, you guys know Nani, her, her, her grandfather, her grandfather. Her grandmother and grandfather, but was a president of the homestead. Back, back in late fifties and sixties, they created a conceptual plan of how it ties Hawaiian homes to the earth. Nothing happened. And then in, uh, I'm learning this as I became president and saying that we will create one conceptual plan on how, well, what is our need for our community? And when we did a survey that Karen alluded to earlier. Then all these plans started coming out from our community. And so then I got introduced to the nineteen seventy-nine plan, conceptual plan of our community lands. Fifty's to sixty's now seventies. Involved in that was, um, Uncle Ed Kalamah and Jackie Pong. Uh, helped design that conceptual plan. And then. Then the nineteen ninety-four plan came out, created by Danthony Moore, so Danthony Moore has now moved to Oregon. Uh, but Dukapuni'a, and so this plan came out and. And then what, what was amazing is that taking the, um, information from our community, we had four, about four hundred. Homesteaders that. Wrote the survey of what they thought the needs of our community was. And so we put it all together and based off of that. We identified that community lands and said, this, this is what we're gonna do on the land. So we, we went through that process when all these plans started surfacing to, to me. And it's amazing that all four plans had the same concept and the same needs. And, and this, this is like sixty-six years ago, you know, and still nothing done. You know, so, uh. I'm, I'm not one to sit idle, so, um. I, I kind of imposed on our board. That we, we need to move on this, and we, we're, we actually are third generation with plans and, you know, I'm not. I'm, I have no intention to pass the plan to my kids. Uh, I, I wanna pass facilities that gonna benefit our people and make us help resort, that whole process. So with that, number one was infrastructure. And so, with the D O D grant, uh, which is about eight million, our homestead would have raised almost sixteen million dollars to just do the infrastructure on their property. We thought we had roads, uh, water lines, electric telecom, subdividing up the property into larger parcels. And so that task was taken on. I, I took on, initially I took on that task. Uh, until I went fishing. And um, I went fishing for our community developers, our, our contractors who had expertise in that field. And I was able to catch a couple of big fish. Uncle Kenny Bell Junior. Uncle Bruce Lindsay just had a heart transplant in Stanford in December. Uncle Tony Phillips, nineteen fifty-two lessee. And uh, more recently, Polite Chong. You know, I'm also in Bay Harbor really good because these guys are really fight and uh they are the ones doing that development back there. So I pass the reins to them. So that, that's, that's what they do. As I mentioned earlier about Kulianna, these guys develop. That's what they do. And so, why, why I don't do? I bring the homesteaders that do development, turn them over to them. I help them find the money so that they can do it. So I realized that um organization, an organization has to be organized. You know, it's a nice term, but an organization needs to be organized. In the Aho Pua system of our, our native people, we were very organized. And we were organized based on Kulianna. Every, the fishermen did not go into the mountain and go hunting. You know, the, the call farmer wasn't making um, peasant bees or, or ahus. They, they did their Kulianna. So if we go back to the customs and traditions of our people and focus on Kulianna, we believe that we can move our people forward. And so, I, I, I kinda like it to like riding a ship and we're on this ship that uh, that we sailing. A big ship, you know, and I intentionally say ship, not canoe. I leave the canoe analogy for other, other country. Um, but we're on this ship and along the way, you know, we, we try to enjoy the journey of, of this. This, it's a journey. We, we went to a port, what we call our community lands. And when we get there, we're gonna build other ships. We're gonna build a health center on the head part for depression park or ranching, ranching community. You know, we, we're gonna, we're gonna do different things, but I'm, I'm there with the community development team to build their ships so that they can gather their people and their staff to go and do what they need to do. But along the way on this journey, I'm, I'm, I'm finding other people that want to be involved. Because, you know, there's only nine of us on a board, so they only can do so much. And so along the way, with this opportunity with the Department of Defense, it was to build a communication system, one emergency operation communication system. So I brought on um, I made some calls and I, I um, called calls to Uncle Ed Techera, who's pretty much the expert in the state of Hawaii when it comes to emergency operations. Yeah, he lives in Wyoming, so I called him up and I said, um, I want you to join me and take Kulianna. And he said, I'm in. Then Lionel Camaro, retired fire chief of the city of Honolulu. Another guy spent twenty years in emergency operations, said he's in Honolulu. So I made a call to him, says, jump on board. He's also a homesteader, really one of them. Uh, but he lives in Honolulu. So brought him on board. Uh, so that um, he can do their Kulianna, you know? So where it goes from there, we still in the planning stages as we move forward. The, the ship is getting ready to dock in our Wyoming lands once the infrastructure is done. Um, once we dock there, then we start building our canoes and then. Exactly what we gonna do is uh, we can only perceive it, but what actually we going to is hasn't been decided. Uh, we, we, we get ideas of where we wanna go. So you gotta have an idea to know, know where you wanna go. But the end result, um ninety-nine point nine percent of the times, your end result is really not what you planned. So I kinda not into heavy planning, that's the situation. We, we go based on needs and based on each, each ship deciding the needs and the Kulianna of their responsibility. And they use the Homestead Association, the membership of over five hundred members. They use our Homestead Association as a sounding board to make sure that what they doing is cohesive with our membership, with the beneficiaries. So in a nutshell, that's who Wyoming Homesteaders Association is. Right, right now, we operate out of eight separate nonprofits. You guys share Wyoming Homestead Association. Right now, here in Kaukau, there's the Wyoming Community Development Corporation and five others that operate their ships as we build their ships to move forward. But that's who we are in the home state. Okay, any questions? Just checking, everybody get questions? Ask now, you, you know, the likelihood of us coming here is very rare.
Okay, you raise your hand, Riley and Persol, come around with a mic and get your question.
I have a lot of words.
Okay, let's start over, you're ready.
Hi, thank you so much. It's really informative. That's a great voice. Thank you so much, Mike. Clear understanding of what's going on. I'm really excited about the CSA. I've always been a member elsewhere. And they give me hope, I'm grateful, I don't know what I can contribute. I do have a twenty-four by sixteen square foot greenhouse, so I'm going to include both the people. And I'll be glad to join them for now. Thank you. What is the timeline is my question. What is your timeline for the CSA? Do you have anything in consideration?
Money.
Pass, pass that pocket a lot. It, it's been, uh, you probably would, would notice because you're farming. One, one of the um greatest needs or that we, we gotta figure out a way, is how to grow a farm, which how to attract them to the farms. We, we've got the model, we've got the plan, uh, uh, already in place for the people to work it. So, and so, when I see the CSA line, we may modify that, but we'll go off of the basic um, plan on everybody contributing and the whole idea of uh, everybody takes Kulianna, take responsibility. Uh, and so, um, right now, there's grants and mics promised me that we're gonna give a grant, so that we can start the conceptual plan. So I'm gonna hold him to it, but I'll hound him until we get, if the money can get started. So that's where we are. Uh, with, with our, there's bidding on grants and and you know, and there's, there's a lot of people that uh, well, I know that is definition, that might help on, on the surface. And, and if I can insert this, uh, one, one of the things I saw that was cool deals hard was to, because it, it's called a real one, real, real rehabilitation. You know, and one of the things that we, and it becomes kinda like our, one of the buzzwords that we use is rehabilitation means getting back to being a thriving, thriving, uh, producing significant, significant value to the community. And I'm talking about the native Hawaiians. Yeah, and so that's when I decided that we get to leave some very, very legal areas with immunity, uh, food security, health, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. You had a question here?
Sure.
So, okay.
I probably wasn't paying attention, Pastor Stedman, sorry. What does CSA mean?
Community supportive. You're not on with nails, so Claire. Okay, community supportive agriculture.
Anyone else?
Uh, for our homestead, number one, you gotta be a native Hawaiian. Um, only privilege is to the beneficiaries and it's twelve dollars a year. So, so we talking about the membership to the park. Yeah, we never reached that phase yet. Yeah, yeah, but we never reached that phase yet.
Yeah, that part is like Mike, what Mike was saying, that's, that's evolving. We wanna start small and so that we're successful and then build on that success. Yeah, like we, we don't wanna build twenty to forty green houses and have no, nothing in place that to work. Yeah, so we, we start small and so we, we, we plan and then work the plan and then if we're successful, then we'll build on that. Okay, so, but we, we will let the community know when is, when is gonna be the, the time when we can start involving the broader Wyoming community.
Right now, it's restricted to the native Hawaiians?
No, no, let me answer that. So no, no. It, it's, it's not restricted to just the native Hawaiians. We not there yet. That, that's what it is. We still building the infrastructure to get on the land. You know, we, we don't, we, we just, we put in a water line, the road's never been paved yet. We still got electric telecom, we gotta, we gotta deal with telecommunications. So that D O D grant can get the infrastructure part all done. And then the subdivisions of that property, the thirty acres he's talking about. Then he, he can get one sub lease to the, to the homestead in the front of my home. Then he can start his planning process of what, what, what he gonna do. That's building his ship. So, he, he, he doesn't have his ship yet.
Well, I mean, anything like requests from people that are interested in farming is?
Yeah, so, so I, I will be honest with you. I will be honest with you that. When we first came up with this concept ten years ago, there's a lot of interest in the community. And um we don't want to um we don't want you to think that it's gonna happen overnight. That's, that's, that's the bottom line, I'm trying to say. When when we I would say within six months, six months that we ready, that we know we gonna do, we, we're gonna, we're gonna blast this community. Everybody gonna knock through, you know? So it's better, uh, we, we don't wanna take names yet because when we ready, we gonna do it. We just not ready yet, you know? Like I said, we still, we still finishing infrastructure. Just to get to that point. And then we gotta find the funds to build out the egg park. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Um, what is the plan for staff and maintenance once everything is built? Um, what kind of staffing are you gonna have for the building and the park? Who will be maintaining it?
It's a very good question.
If you talk about the egg park, every, or the whole of our, in the, we have a whole C B C, which is our, you wanna talk about the community development.
So, so you know, when, when you're dealing with infrastructure, finding funding in a, in a, in a tune of like sixteen million dollars and then then to like build out one health center, another sixteen million dollars and probably the egg park can run us ten million dollars. We're far from thinking who will maintain the place, you know, because if you find yourself looking too far ahead, then, then you kinda miss what's happening right now and then we get stagnated. So we're kinda taking one step at a time as we moving forward. And we, we ensuring that the step we take is the right step and the right way, so that we not have to retrace and then climb the ladder all over again. So we, we, we're not, we're not in a rush. You know, um, we going as fast as money allows us. We'd love to see someone ready to check for twenty-five million and I could tell you the egg park can only live two lives, you know, but it's really um, so we all run through nonprofits and nobody get paid. So everybody is volunteers. So everything that you see is volunteer work, you gotta do. So that's kinda like where we are.
Any else have questions? Let's see. Um, Mike, so the, the D O D funds, uh, so is that for your infrastructure or that's for the E O C?
I sold them on the infrastructure, but it was actually three million of the eight million is for a telecommunications system to bridge federal, state, county, emergency operations. To have a communication system that everybody can work off of. And that came about because of a Pukapu big fire that uh, they weren't, they weren't able to communicate and that kinda really upset the military. And that's why we were invited so that we could build a facility, one emergency operations center to house this communication system and build this collaboration with the Waupua Loa, FEMA, FEMA, Hawaii Emergency and the county. And that's the reason I brought on Uncle Ed Techera, because that is gonna be his Kulianna.
Thank you. Okay. Um, if I could, thank you for caring for the boss. So you're really informative. I guess the question really is, how can we help? And specifically, we start getting to things like working the building permits, you know, making sure that the community can help our game with some of that. Um, please, those hesitate to ask us.
I, I, I won't respond to it right now. So we're in a strange situation. Because we're, we, so you guys don't understand Huayno lands. Huayno lands is a federal ineligible trust. At the state, through statehood, as a condition of statehood, um, one of the conditions was that they would have to um take care of the trust. So there was, there was task with managing the trusts uh, for a better, better amount of the beneficiaries. And that's a condition of this state that, that they required to do that as a condition. But it's still federal lands. And so, um we, we go around the block every decade with the county because the county doesn't have jurisdiction on Huayno Macs. And so, we do things out of um, with memorandum of agreements with them. Even, even like zoning, zoning, they don't have jurisdiction of our zoning. It's a commission that does, and it's based on their fiduciary responsibility to the beneficiaries based on the, on that. So they can't, the county president have that authority to overstep them. So it's we don't play nice though, so we try to play nice. Here's a commissioner, one of nine commissioners to the West Oai Commissioner. But what I greatest. Yeah, so, so they, so you know, I, I'm gonna help you understand just a little bit about Huayno. The Huayno's Commission, and I know you guys hate me, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say it. The Huayno's Commission is like the governor of Huayno Macs. Because the, the federal law, which is adopted by the state and part of the constitution, section two oh six says the duty and responsibility of the governor and the Board of Land and Natural Resources is not applied to Huayno Macs. And so the, so the commission has that governing authority over Huayno Macs. Not, not the governor, not the Board of Land and Natural Resources, it's the commission. And the Department of Huayno Homes was created by the state as a requirement of administering the trust. The state tried to create a Department of Huayno Homes to, to act out the wishes of the commission. That make sense? We are the beneficiaries of the Huayno's Commission Act. We respond to the commissioners. The commissioners, according to their rules, says that they shall act exclusively in the interest of the beneficiary, not the state of Hawaii. So it's, 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 we gotta understand the mechanism of what's happening in all this. Lands are set aside for rehabilitation or any point.
Any other questions?
No, it's not really a question, but if a lot of people forget to the, for Department of Huayno Homes, there is this font on that they have to reach for fifty percent. So I just wanna tell our voice, you guys, for the Hawaiians who don't have the font, if you don't have If you don't have great points to our beneficiaries, tell me these little things. My children who don't have enough, who go to get those resources, they have the assistance. So it takes a lot of bravery to think. I don't wanna say crazy, it's not like, um, crazy, but it's not, it's not crazy. And my husband is a cow and I learned to accept publicity and. Not that it's cow related, but it takes bravery to see a project. And although it's not everyone can, on a head promise. I can see how their project will benefit those in the future because they have a capacity. As their fiduciaries who have fifty percent Hawaiian, who can help Hawaiians later. Because of the government cannot receive those benefits. So just thank you for.
Yeah, let me, I'm sorry about that, credit. Mahalo, because let's, let's pay Ross, okay, he's the, he, he probably cried. We gathered like a sound. Um, one of the things that I was made aware of. And I, I did, uh, just before you came on, before you came on, David Koff was. So, you know, that's the one. And, um, I saw that Tommy was the chairman at their time. And I, I had it set up for her to ask the question to me. Um, she asked, um, the sonny, as, as commissioners, uh, tell us how we can best help you homesteaders. And, and this is my honest answer. I, I thought I'd go, uh, go with that, um. The best way you can help us is tell us that you cannot help us. Yeah, we're gonna figure out how, how one of the homes act is supposed to work. We're gonna have to figure it out ourselves. Okay, so we got this guy who's, he's a maniac. We've been, uh, looking at laws and all that. I cannot do what he does. But he researched the act to understand what the now of the act. And so what we get to do is we get to carry out what we believe is our lead. His vision for what the Hawaiian Homes Act was intended to accomplish. And that's to bring back the native Hawaiian people to the thriving, productive self, you know, um. We, we, we wanna be a force in the community, not only the only force, but part of what drives this community to be, uh, for our, their, their sake, community.
Mahalo, Sammy. Any other questions? Yes.
Can the commissioner change the bottom rate for the.
No, that is, uh, that's federal law, that's federal law.
People won't change their federal law.
Uh, they have tried for a long time. And so, so the most common statement that most people make is that, um. No more fifty percent Hawaiians, right? Then, so that's the most common misconception. You know, we had the privilege on one of our visits to B C that we actually went through the Census Bureau. Where a beneficiary of Hawaii homelands was a director, uh, a must man role, um. She, she, she does the census for the whole Asian Pacific and talking about Hawaii. She said that, and, and their records, they looking at over. A hundred thousand fifty percent Native Hawaiians of the five hundred plus thousand worldwide. We know we're close to running out of Hawaiians, you know, every year, yeah. And, and so, so that's, that's coming from them. So my, my take was that. At the time, Kuhil was pushing in nineteen, ten census, there's only forty thousand Native Hawaiians left. From today, sixteen or twelve thousand pure Hawaiians and thirty-two thousand part Hawaiians, so somewhere around this. It's in forty, forty-eight thousand. If we get five hundred thousand Native Hawaiians today. And a hundred thousand of our, at least fifty percent Native Hawaiian. Principal Hill did a good job. That's the way I look at it. Because he, his speech will be on a verge of extinction. We ain't on a verge of extinction anymore. Yeah.
Questionable.
If Hawaiians are recognized as Native Americans. Are always, she's nodding her head, right? Those for Native Americans, every child has their right to decide and want. And all the pride inside of different things to be that, have, stay that, what happening. My favorite is the people learn to like this. I really like that. How we connected, but I know it's in some of the, you know.
Uh, yeah, so. There, there's so much factions of our Hawaiian people and so much different understandings. And, um, in, in, I'll just summarize it. Unlike Native Americans, we were an independent nation that got overturned. So, so like Native American tribes. There, believe it or not, there are a few in California that have worked, where had treaties with other nations. Yeah, yeah, a lot of people don't know that. But most of them were, were, were tribes that just within their, uh. Kind of America. So they become a government within the federal government. Most Hawaiians say, no, no. We was an independent nation with twenty treaties with twenty separate nations. In this state, prior to State of the Kingdom, we had twenty embassies, foreign embassies. Stationed in Hawaii that we had treaties with. So we, we weren't one tribe. We were an independent nation recognized by the, uh, United Nations. So anything short of that, for most Hawaiians, we, we don't want anything short of that. But it, it, it's not them. It's us that got all of this. You know, and I think that's the biggest thing for us to understand is, is us that now are the next. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so they're, um, I, I was involved in it for many, many years with the coastal reservation in Washington State. And the big sovereignty, I mean. They, they feel the same way. They are sovereign nations.
Yeah.
That dealing with, and so there's a big push. That the United States government has to deal with them. That's not the main thing. So.
I, I'm very familiar with all.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're running out, we're out of time now. And, uh, what I'd like to do is thank Mike and the board for sharing us with us this evening. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming out tonight. I'd like to thank those who attended in person and online. Our April fourth meeting will focus on early childhood challenges and opportunities. Drive safe and have a great evening. Mahalo.